He captured that.
Department salary and wage adjustments for the fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. Number two, Leamester Police Department salary and wage adjustments for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. And number three, dispatch salary and wage adjustments for the fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. Unfortunately, the mayor's office had notified me that they made an error on this submission for the petition. The petition is missing the request to accept the DPW pay scale as well. As such, we will not be open the public hearing tonight. Instead, we'll be amending the petition on the floor later and reschedule the public hearing date for September 26 at 6:50 p.m. Let me check with numbers in my committee to see if anyone has anything they'd like to add. Counselor Badanza?
No, that's a great summary. I'm in favor of the proposed action.
And I see Counselor Pauline Cormier Nardi.
Yes, I would support that as well.
Thank you so much.
Point of order.
Any other member of the council have anything they'd like to?
The hearing is open, right?
It was open.
Oh, that's right.
We're not opening the hearing.
You're not opening the hearing? That's your intent?
Right, that was my intent.
Okay.
Open? The hearing has to be open. It's been published. Open and then just put it off.
No, because we have to republish it in full. It doesn't have to be opened if it's announced at the meeting because of the error, and it can be rescheduled and republished to comply with the law.
Even if it's been published?
Yes. So, for example, if we were to have a special permit hearing and the applicant canceled due to unforeseen circumstances, and it was the first meeting and they chose not to open the public hearing, we would just not open it and reschedule it and repost it to comply with the publishing laws.
Yep. I have a question. So, this has to be reposted and in full because it was the DPW line that was missing from the original posting?
Correct.
Correct. So, it has to be redone. Okay.
Yes. So, that's what's going to happen.
I think we're set, Mr. President.
We're set. Okay. It's at 6:50. Kimmy, you want to go get the public forum? Thank you much. I don't think anybody signed up, but... Okay, we are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, as well as identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding to or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. At this point, we do not have anybody that has signed up for the public forum, so I will ask, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I now declare the public forum closed. Thank you. The city council to order for September 12, 2022. We will all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of the Leamester City Council, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
President.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Arndt.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. All nine members are present this evening. Does the chairwoman of records, the vice president, have any records to approve this evening?
I do, Mr. President. I did review the minutes from the August 22, 2022, meeting, and unless anyone has any corrections to it, I find them to be in good order, and I ask that they be placed on file.
Okay, if there's no questions or problems, we'll ask that those are be placed on file. Okay, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
I didn't get a copy of the minutes. I didn't get any of them. They're not in my pack up.
May I suggest that we put them off till next meeting and I can get a copy to everybody via email?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. We'll just tape those till the next meeting. We'll put them back on the agenda.
Sure.
Okay, before we get into the business of the meeting, Counselor Arndt had asked me if I would entertain a moment of silence to remember all of those that we lost on September 11 of 2001. Yesterday was the 21st, the anniversary of that tragedy, which we all remember, so I will ask for a moment of silence for all the victims of that horrible day. Thank you all very much. Okay, we will move on to communications from the mayor, beginning with C-14.
C-14, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $10,000 be made to the Northwest School Library Project account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization account.
Okay, and C-14 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's the first time on the calendar. Regular course.
C-14 has been given regular course. C-50?
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $500,000 be made to the street resurfacing expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization account.
And C-15 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, first time on the calendar. It must be given regular course.
And C-15 has been given regular course. Moving on to appointments.
Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appointment of the following individuals: to Office of Emergency Management, Communication Unit, Ronald Gerard, 140 Adams Street, Apartment 404, Leamester, Mass; Emergency Operations, Shen Bergeron, 54 Richard Road, Leamester, Mass.
Okay, and these appointments are referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course. And may I request that we send out an invitation for interviews on November 26, 2022, at 6:45?
September.
September.
November.
September, please, September.
Okay, September 26, 2022. And the clerk will schedule those and get them on the agenda when, at a time that's appropriate. Okay, so those have been given regular course, and we will do the interviews on September 26. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, beginning with 5-23. Madam Clerk?
5-23, David Cormier, Ward Three Counselor, and Pauline Cormier, Ward Two Counselor, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-29 of the Revised Ordinances entitled Handicap Parking Spaces, and add the following: two reserved spaces on Summer Street, closest to the entrance to Carter Park, opposite 60 Summer Street.
And 5-23 is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the agenda, regular course. There's a public hearing date of September 26 at 6:50 p.m., and I would ask the clerk send a referral to Leamester Police Traffic Division. And in Carter Park, please send one to the mayor's office as well, courtesy.
Okay. All right, so 5-23 will be given regular course with a referral to the Police Department Traffic Division in the mayor's office, and I'd ask that we... Counselor Brady? I didn't see a copy of that.
I don't have copies of either petition.
Oh, it didn't?
5 or 6.
I didn't get any.
23. Oh, we should have.
I don't know if it matters, but...
I'll get you another copy. That was in between meetings from the last set over the three-week space, but I'll get you another copy.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think that the problem's similar throughout. 5-23 and 6-23.
I'll get both. No problem. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so 5-23 will be given regular course with a referral to the Police Department Traffic Division in the mayor's office, and we need to take a vote to establish a public hearing on September 26, 2022, at 6:50 p.m. All those in favor signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, that public hearing has been established. And moving on to 6-23?
6-23, Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles, see attached letter. And I will get you another copy of that as well. Thanks.
Okay, this item also falls into legal affairs and is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course. I would ask a referral to License Commission and the Building Inspector's Office as well. And I noted that we have a public hearing date scheduled October 11, but I'm missing a time. If the clerk could recommend a time for that public hearing, I'd be very grateful.
6:50 p.m., please.
6:50. Thank you.
Okay, so 6-23 will also be given regular course with a referral to the License Commission and the Building Inspector, and we need to take a vote to have a public hearing on October 11, 2022, at 6:50 p.m. All those in favor signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, that public hearing has also been established. Moving on to matters before the city council, does the chairman have a financial report?
Yes. We began the fiscal year on July 1 with a balance in the stabilization account of $20,675,366. Since that time, we've added to the account interest in the amount of $9,370, leaving a total in the account of $20,684,736. Since the beginning of the fiscal year, we have appropriated or have pending for appropriation $1,275,878. And if C-14 and C-15 totaling $510,000 are ultimately appropriated, the resulting balance will be $19,408,858, and that is the financial report.
Okay, you've heard the financial report from the chairman. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will now move on to items into finance, beginning with C-11. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Sure. C-11, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $15,000 be made to the dog officer expense account, the same amount to be transferred from stabilization account. This is to meet the contractual obligation that was negotiated with the dog officer. At the time that the budget was put in place, that amount wasn't known. So, this additional money is necessary, like I said, to meet the contractual obligation. As a result, it would be my position to grant C-11. I would ask you, Mr. President, to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-11. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I appreciate the Finance Chair's explanation of that, but I don't have a copy of that petition either. I don't have a copy of that or C-12.
This is from last packets worth.
Okay.
I can get you another copy?
Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful. I don't have a problem with it because I think it's very straightforward, but...
Yeah, I haven't been duplicating the pieces that we already gave out in previous packets because it was giving me a lot of paper. But if you want me to, I can. I don't mind.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-11 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C-11 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $15,000 be appropriated to the dog officer expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C-11 has been adopted. Moving on to C-12.
C-12, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the appropriation of $58,000 be made to the following insurance expense accounts, the same to be transferred from the stabilization account. Risk management, $16,000. Liability insurance, $4,000. Workers' compensation insurance, $38,000. Again, the actual cost of MIAA insurance costs through that particular vendor at the time of the budget were not known but only approximated. Since that time, the contract for the ensuing year has been entered into, and we need some additional money to meet those contractual obligations as well. And those are the amounts that are listed here or listed just a moment ago. Mr. President, it would be my position to grant C-12. I will also mention that in talking with the comptroller, there are some new players coming into this arena that make this going forward perhaps a little bit more competitive. And the city is now on a short-term contract, and the reason for that is they want to explore more competitive bids in the future with additional companies in the arena. But basically, we have to pay the bill. So, again, my position is to grant C-12.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-12. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-12 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C-12 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $58,000 be transferred to the following insurance expense accounts, risk management, $16,000. Liability insurance, $4,000. Workers' compensation, $38,000. All to be transferred from the stabilization account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify in the usual manner. Signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted for C-12. Moving on to items into legal affairs, 2-23. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. 2-23, Peter Angelini Wood, Ward Five Counselor, requests that the city accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 3, Group Paragraph, allowing EMTs as members of Group Four. Mr. President, during our last meeting, we had asked for referrals for the mayor's office and the retirement board on this particular petition. I must say that I received a referral from the mayor's office, and the referral that I received from Mr. David LaPlante at the retirement board was outstanding. It was probably the best referral that I've ever received. And I'll read first the mayor's referral to the record, if I may.
Sure.
It stated September 7, the city council members, 25 West Street, Leamester, Massachusetts, dear members of the city council, in response to petition at 2-23, Peter Angelini Wood, five counsel, requests that the city accept provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32, Section 3, Group Paragraph, allowing EMTs as members of Group Four. Please note that I am in favor of petition 2-23. If I move over to Mr. LaPlante. This letter is dated September 6, 2022, addressed to Leamester City Council. Dear honorable city council members, at the city council meeting dated August 22, 2022, the city council requested information from the Leamester Retirement Board regarding the acceptance of the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 32, Section 3, 2G, Group Paragraph, allowing paramedics to become members of Group Four. I have enclosed percentage charts for your review showing the difference between Group One, Group Two, and Group Four, along with a description of each group and who belongs under it. For anyone becoming a member on or after April 2, 2012, qualifications to obtain 80% of your retirement, in parentheses, max retirement, under each group are as follows: Group One, age 67, with 32 years of service; Group Two, age 62, with 32 years of service; Group Four, age 57, with 32 years of service. The impact on the Leamester Retirement Board allowing the pandemic employees to move from Group Two to Group Four is the possibility that the board may start paying 80% of their salary five years earlier due to the age requirement moving from 62 to 57. Respectfully, David LaPlante, Chairman. Then Mr. LaPlante included the summary of Massachusetts General Law that we all received in our pack up this week, along with a chart with a heading Group One chart, a Group Two chart, and a Group Four chart, basically breaking... I don't know if the camera can see that. And these charts are available at the clerk's office if anyone would like to review them. We're fortunate enough to have the chief of our fire department along with a couple of members this evening, so I'd make a motion, Mr. President, if we adjourn, so we can ask them to come in perhaps and talk and answer some questions about this particular petition.
I think you mean a motion to recess?
Yes.
A motion to recess by Counselor Angelini. We have a second. Counselor Arndt, all those in favor of having a recess so that the fire chief can come in and give us an explanation? Is there any discussion about that? All those in favor signify in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of nine to zero, we now stand in recess. Chief Sidla, would you like to come in as well as any other guests? I guess, Mr. Chairman, since we are in recess, if you want to entertain any questions about 2-23, 3-23, and 4-23, while we're in recess, and then, once we're done, we'll go back into session and proceed with the rest of the meeting.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you.
Would you please introduce yourselves, the members of the council, that may not know all of you?
Oh, there it is. Chief Robert Sidla.
Randy Gerard, paramedic.
Ryan Young, lieutenant on the fire department and local 1841 president.
Thank you, gentlemen. Chief, since you're so well-versed in this and you've already actually started the program, I know you've hired a paramedic already.
Correct.
And I think at this point, perhaps it'd be wise just to open it up for questions. So, I'm going to pass to other members of my committee at this time because I think I'm in pretty good shape in understanding what we're trying to do with the Group Four change. I think David LaPlante did a wonderful job as well of explaining as far as the retirement board's perspective.
Correct.
So, at this point, I'll defer to members of my committee first. Counselor Badanza?
Yeah, I just, Chief, the distinction between an EMT and a paramedic for the purposes of this particular petition is what?
Yeah, so the EMTs are under CMR 1700, you know, Commonwealth Massachusetts Regulation 1700. And an EMT has different categories, classifications. So, there's a basic EMT, which is what all the firefighters are. We can basically do first aid with our hands, bandages, splints, backboarding, transport, give oxygen, CPR, and then we can give medicines, aspirin, assist with a glucose-type, you know, sugar when someone's a diabetic. when someone's a diabetic. Then there's an EMT-A, which is advanced. So they're allowed to do some more advanced techniques than us where they can work on an airway, they can do some cardiac type, but they can't administer the full drugs that a paramedic can. And then the final is it's EMT paramedic is, a paramedic can do a whole host of things that save your life is, they can administer drugs, they can read monitors if somebody's having a heart, certain types of heart attack, they can start medicines in the field, they can open airways, they can do some pretty neat procedures that's well-advanced of what a basic EMT is. And the schooling that they're required is about two years compared to our, you know, short EMT of 120 hours.
So the, the EMTs we currently have until you made this one higher?
Correct.
Were basic EMTs and EMTAs?
We have basic EMTs, no, basic EMTAs.
All right. And every basic EMT that we have is a firefighter?
Correct.
So their, their retirement designation is already done?
Correct. So police, police and fire are in Group Four. Our EMTs that we run the ambulance with, since the inception of the EMT program, which was in the early 70s, they've all been granted the Group Four status because we do dual roles. So now we are hiring non-firefighter paramedics that are not covered under the firefighter clause in the Group Four distinction. So through my research, it looks around, the acts of 2008 was the state realized that there, that there are services moving towards EMT, EMT paramedic that are municipal services.
Right.
So they did the acts of 2008, which created the law that added the EMT language into the...
So essentially, by adopting this, any EMT that comes into the department at any one of those levels is going to be included in Group Four?
That's, that's correct.
All right.
And just to fill, the basis for that is they're, they're doing the same dangerous job as a police and firefighter is public safety. And police and fire, you know, was established, you know, the professional full-time forces early 1900s. And EMS didn't really get established, although it took, took, it took, got hold in the 50s. It really didn't get established by the type of training that we get today until the early 70s. So I think the Group Four law was already created, the 111F benefits were already created.
Right.
So the state legislature, by passing this law, is now advanced the, the EMTs and the paramedics because it has become the third public safety profession.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
It's very helpful.
Counselor Paul?
I'm set.
Chief, thank you. I was just wondering, does this, now, are we going to be in line with other cities, other municipalities by doing this?
So the, the ones that stick out are Fall River Fire Department runs a similar type situation where they have non-firefighter, fire department personnel that run their ambulance with paramedics. Our New Bedford is another big player. Bill Ricker is another big player. Bill Ricker is similar, you know, they're similar size to us, you know, more than Fall River, New Bedford. Their police department actually runs the EMS service, and it's not police officers, but it's civilian paramedics, you know, non-uniform firefighters. And all those departments, through our research, is they, the cities have adopted the three provisions.
So is this going to make the city of Lemminster, your department, more competitive as a way of hiring?
So we, we did the interviews this past week, and we're not making the selections until, we kind of know who we want, but we're not going to offer the jobs until tomorrow because this is a big advantage to hire seasoned paramedics from the private sector. You know, it, this is a great benefit, you know, we appreciate it as firefighters, and I'm sure the police do too. But we know when we run into an incident, if we're working at a car accident, or we go into the house to do CPR or something, if we accidentally get hurt or nail, you know, nail on a needle or something, we know that our paycheck is going to be protected and that our families will be protected. So it's, it's a benefit to draw people, but it's also a benefit, and it's a pride for us because we're willing to risk a little more because it is such a good benefit and well-appreciated.
Thank you, Chief. I have no further questions.
Let me open it up to members of the council. Counselor Shelton Zepfer.
Thank you very much. You answered one of my questions about other paramedics in the fire department. But I know that you've hired one new paramedic.
Correction, Randy Gerard.
Great, welcome. And you're looking for $200,000 for a new truck, right?
Correct. Well, it's, so the cardiac monitors, they're $120,000. And these have a big lifespan on the equipment. So they're the, the heart monitors that the paramedics will bring into the house, and they'll hook you up, and then they can, you know, reset your rhythm, give you an electric shock, monitor you. I know before the council floor, I always talk about is the STEMI's. So when people are having a certain heart attack and the paramedic reads it as a STEMI, they bypass Lemminster Hospital, go directly to the cath lab. So a paramedic like Randy will get on the radio, he's administering drugs, he's watching the monitor, he's, he's doing everything to keep this person, you know, in good shape. And he gets right on the radio to UMass, they open up the STEMI lab 24/7, and they'll actually bring the patient in and turn it over to the doctor as the doctor goes in and cleans the artery. It's fascinating. But we have a lot of people that will come back in a fire station and want to thank us because three days prior, they, they were having a heart attack and the paramedics. So that equipment that's, it's 120,000 of these monitors that allow them to do this. Then they need a host of drugs, a host of new bags and type of equipment, and then we're buying them a new vehicle.
Okay.
So they'll be in an SUV.
Okay.
And they'll be able to go from call to call.
God.
So one of the, one of the issues is, is a shortage of paramedics, and in COVID is, is a bigger shortage, is, is a big increase of, of mental health-type calls and basic life support that we can handle.
Yep.
The departments that run the paramedics in the ambulance are losing their paramedics to transporting patients that don't require that level of care, that they're not ready for where they're actually, you know, needed. So our model is one that's going to allow them that if they go to a call and they're not needed, they can move on.
Yep.
And we can handle it.
So they're like a caseworker that goes from case to case depending on what they need, which is a model, I didn't realize that that's how it was working, but it makes a lot of sense to me. I think it's pretty, very smart.
And, and the state inspectors that come up, they have to give us our license. So we had the initial meeting, been working with them, and that's why we hired Randy up front, you know, sooner. They are so excited because they, they, they love this model. They think this model is the future. It's unsustainable to have a limited amount of paramedics in ambulances that are being tied up on basic life support calls.
Yep.
And that's why we're before you is, we want to give them the same benefit that we enjoy.
Yep. No, this presentation was very, very helpful. So I appreciate, you know, the three of you being here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Arndt?
Just out of curiosity, Chief, by the way, I agree with the counselor across from that you did an excellent job in presenting this. But, so this will be a chase car following the regular ambulance. Will it go on every call?
Only ALS. So the way it works is the call goes 911, it goes into the police dispatches, and they do a process called EMD, emergency medical dispatching. So in Massachusetts, when you call 911, you, that person has to stay on the phone until you're either stabilized or a higher level of care shows up. So the dispatches will talk somebody through either CPR or how to stop bleeding, and, and then they turn, they turn the information over to us. We take the call and depending on what is the issue, the, you know, the need, we determine if it's ALS or BLS. So, you know, if someone calls up and they have chest pains, the paramedic would go along with the fire truck and the ambulance. If someone calls up and, you know, their knee is swollen, that would be strictly an ambulance at the BLS level.
Okay.
So there's a, there's a screening process, but this helps, helps that right away from the screening process, and then we have a standard. So the medics in Lemminster are dispatched about 50% of the calls. They were transporting about 30% of the time, but because there's a shortage with the private vendor that we have, we're down to the 18% of the time. So one of the reasons we're trying to get the medics up quick is to fill that gap of the shortage. We should be up to, they're transporting people around 30% of the time. And, you know, and we, we've been working with Randy and stuff is, you know, we only want to transport the people that need it. We're not trying to transport to, to, to make money off of. We're just, we want his skills used at that level.
Thank you. This is an off-the-wall question, but as you were talking, I've read a couple of things on other police, other cities and towns, not in Massachusetts necessarily. But has there ever been any thought to having your, your police officers, this is something out of your realm, but having police officers with the basic EMT training also? Because sometimes they're the first on the scene.
Yeah, they are. I know some have had, you know, they have had their EMTs. I know the mayor's worked with the police chief of DFIBs in the cars in, in having them, you know, monitor the calls and respond to the ones. And Ryan and Randy are in the field, and actually, the police, we've recognized a number of them over the last year or so. They've done some tourniquets that have saved a young girl's arm and, so, I mean, any type of improvement, I agree with it, but right now, we have a pretty good system.
Okay.
And we, we want Randy to build it and his fellow paramedics. As part of us is, is, we would like our paramedics to help teach the police what we know. So when we get to a call, we're already a team, we're working on it.
All right, sounds great. Thank you.
Before I go to other members of the council, what's, what's first on my mind? So you guys are familiar with the term the golden hour, right?
Yep, correct.
In medicine. So, I mean, we're at a point now, the advent of these, all these new techniques, if we can get a patient that's had a heart attack or a stroke to appropriate care or even through the EMT en route to a, to a trauma center, the chances of that person not having long-term impacts from that event greatly increased.
Correct.
If we can get them there.
So UMass is a Level One trauma center. So that's in the field, us at the basic level. Sometimes we can't handle it, we got to go to Lemminster, the doctor has to stabilize the person, patient, then we either have to, you know, a private ambulance or a helicopter. With paramedics in the field, they'll be able to stabilize, talk to the doctors, and be able to make the decision, go right to the trauma center. And that's the piece we're missing. And, and actually, because of the shortage, we're relying on other towns, so we kind of have to wait even longer, so.
Terrific. Thank you, Chief. Anyone else? Counselor Brady?
Yeah, just a quick question. Can we increase the billable money because of this service?
Correct. Yep. So, so right now, the billing is, we have a split with the private company on the ALS level for the, for the Medicare and Mass. Health rates, and they do something on the insurance rates where they are able to bill a certain code. Once we have paramedics and we're providing the ALS service, we'll do all the billing. And then the plan is that Randy, once we hire the other paramedics, our first, first line of business is we want to get on board with the billing and then come before the council and, and possibly increase the billing, but still keep it so that the taxpayers are not, you know, it'd still be third-party billing through the insurance companies. And, and we want to make the system sustainable. That's the whole idea is with the mayor and everything was, you know, this is a big leap for the mayor, the city council, fire department, was, the whole idea was, we want to make this so it's sustainable, that, you know, this is, this is going to last and, and the funding will be there so that we have the equipment and the staffing and...
It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Frida?
Thanks, Chief. I am a little familiar about it through Bill Ricker and a little bit with New Bedford and discussions in the past.
Yeah.
Not a lot, though. But I do trust your judgment and what you think is best for the city of Lemminster. You've been doing it a long time, and I don't think you've made too many mistakes in my book yet. So...
Thank you.
But out of curiosity, do we have an idea, either to you or to the legal affairs chair, do we have an idea what the financial impact that the community could be with this change in the grouping?
So on the, on the, on the grouping or the paramedics, for the billing of the paramedic service? Yeah. So on the billing of the paramedic service is, you've worked on very conservative figures, and with Lemminster, with the runs we have in our current billing status, is we should be able to pay for two-staffed ambulances and, and the paramedics. We participate in a Medicare reimbursement program that we bought $300,000 in this year, and we've been bringing in anywhere from like 250 to 300. We are probably on the, the lower third of the North Wester County billing for ALS, BLS. So what we'd like to do is come back before the council, and the rate that the council, we have set over the years is Medicare plus 150%. We would like to maybe up that to Medicare plus 200% or 250, and that would bring in a few hundred more thousand dollars and I think would really make, make this service stable and, you know, it would pay for itself without really impacting the residents. You know, the residents with their insurance have their copays. Copays won't change on a billing increase.
I would think that it, what is the hospital feeling towards this? Have they been, you talked to them? I mean, I would think it's, I'd think they'd be supportive because you've got, they know what they're dealing with when you get to the hospital.
Correct. So, so we have to have medical direction as a BLS service and an ALS, and, you know, we have to pay a medic, some doctors through the Lemminster Hospital. It's now through UMass. And our medical control is 110% on board with this. One of their members actually was instrumental in getting ALS into Auburn in years ago. So they, they're really, really excited. We were on the phone with them the other day. Everything we do, we run by them. Prior to that, we always had meetings with the higher-ups at the hospital, and we always, you know, tried to get them to provide the service, but, but everybody realizes it's really, really needed. So we definitely have support from the higher-ups, but our medical control is very much on board.
Any chance of financial support from the hospitals?
I'd love to.
Always, always an opportunity.
Yeah. Yeah, we bring them a lot of patients. So we're bringing them close to 5,000 patients a year. The numbers just went up again this fiscal year, so, yeah, be nice.
Please, Counselor Frida? Just the observation I think that I had during our discussion was, we look at the private ambulance companies, they're certainly not nonprofits, right? And from what I can tell, they're doing pretty well.
Correct.
So, so I suspect that through the billing model that you're talking about, if the council were to buy on, buy in, the program seems like it has a very, very good chance to sustain itself.
Absolutely. And as far as the privates is, I've had conversations with the owner of MedStar, is we still need them and they need us. So we want to have a good relationship with the private sector, not, you know, not only the hospital but the private ambulance company. That's where Randy came from. You know, they've been, they've done us well throughout the city, you know, to the city throughout the years, and we intend on maintaining that, that relationship very much so.
Terrific. Any of the councils, because I just wanted to delve...
Anybody, I don't want to be rude.
Okay.
Randy's first time in.
Chief, on the other two provisions, the other two petitions, obviously, one's dealing with basically a workers' comp. Someone's injured on the job.
Yeah, correct.
We certainly want to provide them with the same benefits that, that firefighters would receive.
Correct. So the, so the one's on the indemnification, paying for the bills, and the other one is for lost time?
Correct.
So those would be similar to 111F for the firefighters. So one is 111M, one is 111N. So one is 111M, one is 111N. The firefighters and police, we have 111F. That's, they would get those benefits with the exception of the presumptive laws. So firefighters also have the 111F benefits, but heart disease is presumed to be caused by the job, lung disease is presumed to be caused by the job, and cancer is. So they won't be exposed to the toxins like we are, but they'll be exposed to the trips, the falls, the falling downstairs, the lifting of a very, you know, difficult situation in a patient, you know, vehicle accidents, stuff like that. You know, we had a very serious accident and Randy, Randy is working for us, but he can only work at the level of an EMT right now because we're not licensed, but, you know, he very much is involved in the things, and these members will be right in the cars that, you know, we've got a hose line, so don't catch on fire in there, establishing an airway and stuff, so they're very much exposed to those type of dangers, and we'll keep them out of the toxic environment as much as possible.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Just, you said you deliver 5,000 patients to the Leamester Hospital a year?
Correct. Forty-eight, our last numbers was over 4,800.
Like 14 a day?
Yeah, correct. We do, we do over six, I think it was like 6,500 medical calls. So we, in our department, we do lift assists. We, a lot of motor vehicle accidents, we go to, we don't transport because the patients will do a waiver. So we're transporting close to 5,000 people. We're actually close to 6,000 patients, you know? So we do, we do a lift assist, so an elderly couple may call up and the husband fell down, is we'll go with the ambulance or the fire truck and lift them up, but we do a full medical workup. So people, when they fall, a lot of times they fall for a reason. They have something going on, you know, pre-stroke or pre-something. So what we do is we go and do a workup, a medical, take their vitals, we just don't pick them up and place them. And those are the stuff that the city residents are not charged for. We only charge on the actual transports to the hospital, and we get either Mass Health, Medicare, or private insurance. If someone can't pay because they're in limbo, they may not have one of those, we have a process that we can help them. And, you know, they're just, anybody who has insurance is going to pay the copay. The private is under different standards. They're, they're in it to run a business and make a profit, so they'll do bill collecting, they will, you know...
I just, I was, like I say, I was just impressed by the number of calls you're making in a day.
For the Leamester, for the Leamester, yes, yeah. And some seriously sick people, the term they use is sick, whether they're really hurt in a bad accident or, you know, they have something serious medically going on, and it gets, and after midnight, it kind of quiets down. So it's kind of much from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night that, you know, there's a lot of going.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
It looks like you've answered all the questions.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I didn't. So I know Randy said, oh, this is Randy Duran, Randy Leamester individual that is, the best way I can describe him is true blue, Leamester Public Safety. He's spent most of his career with the private company, but he's been on the streets with us. I can't tell you how many times he's transported my mother. So we brought him on early because he actually, over the last two months, has done all the work with the state and the medical control. We just found out today that we're good to go. We just got a few Ts to cross and Is to dot that Randy's taken care of, but our medical director suggested we bring the individual on, you know, earlier and get it up and running. So we're almost home. Once we hire these medics and we'll be in business. And I can't say enough about, Ryan is representing the union, and we are so excited to have Randy come on and work for us. His bedside manner and his level of care is second to none, so. No, it's well due, it's well due. Even if we weren't hiring him, he would still get the same accolades.
We appreciate it all very much.
Thank you.
And we look forward to supporting you in any way we can.
Thank you.
What do you have? Let us know.
And thank you very much for this. This is really important to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hope I was able to convince you.
Yeah.
We now, we now stand back in session, and Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, 2-23, are you ready to report?
Well, you, as we heard, just had a wonderful presentation with the chief and associates. It's obviously a program that I think would be extremely beneficial to the community, and we got this coming up later, so I would, let me go to members of my committee. I mean, I'd be in favor of supporting this. Counselor Bedanta?
Yeah, I'm in favor of granting 2-23.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, so it sounds like unanimous decision of Legal Affairs then to grant 2-23. Is there any other discussion on 2-23? Do we need to do this in a roll call? No. Okay. All those in favor of granting 2-23 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. 2-23 has been granted. Moving on to 3-23.
Thank you, Mr. President. 3-23, Peter Angelini Wood, five council, request that the provisions of Massachusetts General Law 41, Section 11, 111N, indemnification of EMTs. Once again, Chief Sidle was kind enough to come down tonight and explain this provision. It's just basically protecting the EMTs from any legal issues that might arise as a result of the performing service on a patient. And obviously, in light of what we heard tonight, this is an important aspect of the hiring process, so I would certainly recommend that we grant 3-23, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Bedanta?
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Counselor Cormier?
I'll make it unanimous.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant 3-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 3-23, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. 3-23 has also been granted. And 4-23.
4-23, Peter Angelini Wood, five council, request that the city accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 111M, EMTs leave without loss of pay. Once again, this is the third part of the presentation from the chief this evening, and again, this one merely is basically a worker's comp-type program that ensures that if the EMTs are hurt on the job, they will receive compensation until they are healthy enough to come back to work. So I would certainly be in favor of this, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Bedanta?
Yeah, well, I'm fully in favor of it.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant 4-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 4-23, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. 4-23 has been adopted, and it is nice to see some of the framework being put in place for this wonderful service that we're going to be providing. Thank you very much, Chief. Moving on to C-13, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am indeed. So C-13, again, is Dean J. Mazurilla. I'll read it again. Mayor requests that the city council adopt attached ordinance updates. This ordinance update to Chapter 16 personnel, Section 16-30, the Leamester revised ordinances reflects Leamester Fire Department salary and wage adjustments for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024, Leamester Police Department salary and wage adjustments for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024, and dispatch salary and wage adjustments for the fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024. As I mentioned earlier, what was excluded from this when it was sent down and why we asked that we amend it this evening, was in the letter that was sent dated September 8th, number four, the first three that I just read are listed, and number four, the Department of Public Works salary and wage adjustments for the fiscal year 2002 through 2024. That's what we would need to amend in order to move this petition forward. So I will make a motion that we amend.
Okay.
Using that language. So we're going to add, it would be Leamester Department of Public Works salary and wage adjustment for fiscal year 2022 through fiscal year 2024.
Okay. Do we have a...
We had to continue the public hearing and re-advertize it. How can we vote on it?
Yeah, we can't.
We can.
We're voting on a petition to amend the petition.
We're amending a petition.
Oh, okay.
That's going to go up and be re-advertized. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep. I have the petition handed at C-08, C-08, but on the agenda it's C-13.
Yep.
So I'm confused.
Yeah, sorry about that. So we had a renumbering for a couple of the communications because the comptroller had a few numbers that she had assigned previously as well to the money orders that we put through, so she asked that we re-sign the numbers. So a few of our petitions have had number reassignments for administrative purposes. So this one was a previous C-08 and has now become C-13 because she had assigned a money document for auditing purposes to it, so she asked us to amend it.
And when, and I'm assuming that when, and if this gets amended, we can scrap all that and we're going to have all new...
Fresh documents.
All fresh documents, and it's going to be re-advertized and we'll start all over again?
Yep.
As amended?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'll second the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Bedanza. Is there any other discussion on this amendment? Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I don't have the, our last agenda in front of me, but I assume that we didn't have DPW on there either?
No.
No.
No, it only added that number three, which included dispatch, but it did not include DPW, which would be the new addition.
So we're being asked to vote tonight and adding that?
To amend it, to add.
To add.
The DPW stuff.
And that's not, I don't have an issue with it, but just, that's not how we should be presenting stuff to the public. They should know what we're voting on. It wasn't on the last agenda. Now, tonight, we're adding, we're amending this to add it. I mean, if somebody has a comment to that...
We're voting to amend the petition, so we can...
Excuse me, would that be through the chair? Are you going through the chair?
Sure. If it pleased the council, through the chair.
Isn't that the process?
We're voting to amend the petition...
Yep.
So that the public will know transparently through public advertising, the full petition the next time we actually have a hearing on this petition.
Through the chair?
Yes, yes. Go ahead.
Because I didn't think this was a finance question, but through the chair, this is, we're voting on this petition tonight.
We're voting to amend the petition through the chair.
Voting to amend the petition, and then once we amend it, aren't we going to vote on the full petition?
No, not tonight. It's going to be re-advertized.
We're not. We're just amending it tonight.
Correct.
Yeah. So after, if you guys approve to amend it, I'm going to take the amended language. I'm going to put a new public hearing in the newspaper, and on our next agenda, the full language would show there, because if we didn't do that, it wouldn't be transparent to the public otherwise.
Is this, is this time-sensitive?
When I spoke to Jen, when she let us know in my office that this occurred, that, yeah, it was, because they needed to...
Okay, because it really would make more sense to give it leave to a drawer and just do a new one.
Yeah.
But that adds to more weeks.
That's what I had asked, too, but it is time-sensitive.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Considering these wages are already being paid, I think it's time-sensitive.
These wages are already being paid?
That's correct.
Yeah.
They're contractual obligations of the city, so we should make the ordinance reflect that as soon as possible.
So it really doesn't matter, then? Is what you're saying?
It matters.
I don't think it does, but that's all right.
That's your opinion.
Okay, so do we have any other discussion about this amendment? If not, should we do amendment in roll call as well, or...
I would...
Yeah, when I'm going to do this amendment, yeah, I'm going to do this amendment in a roll call vote so that we can amend this petition to read what has been stated, and then it's going to be republished, and all these, all the communications for this petition will be refreshed to all of us, so you can get rid of, everything you have now, get rid of it.
Renumbered.
And we're going to have all renumbered, and the full amendment will be presented to us for the next meeting. Okay? All those in favor, I'm sorry, Counselor Bedanza?
Yay.
Counselor Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Ardinger?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Brady?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Deacon?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
And that will be recorded as yay. By a vote of nine to zero, this petition will be amended, and it's going to be re-advertized, okay? And given further time?
Yes.
Give them further time, okay? Glad we got through that. Moving on to items under...
Do they have to vote on further time?
We can vote on further time. Okay, so all those, thank you very much, all those in favor of further time for the amendment, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, there we go. Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Frida. Okay, so Ways and Means, Madam Chairwoman, are you ready to report on the reappointment?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Dean J. Mazurilla, Mayor, request the reappointment of Paul Kennedy to the position of forest warden, term to expire on April 15th, 2024. This was given regular course in the past. This is a vital part to the city and the planning for the future. It would be my position, Mr. President, to grant the reappointment of Mr. Kennedy, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Ardinger?
I agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm this reappointment. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of confirming this appointment of Paul Kennedy to the position of forest warden, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. This reappointment has been confirmed. Moving on to new business, there are no items on the agenda. Anybody have any old business? Once again, there's no items on the agenda. Anybody have any? Seeing none. I was asked to remind the public of the Johnny Appleseed Festival, which has become a tradition now in our community in the fall for at least the past 25 years. That's going to be held on September 24th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in downtown Leamester. I don't have a list of all the vendors and all the sponsors, but if I did, I probably would, I wouldn't be reading it all anyway because we'd be here all night. There are many of them, and we appreciate everyone who participates, most of them year after year after year, and anybody who's new, we welcome them and thank them for their participation. Did you say there's over 200 vendors this year, according to the facilitator, former Councilor Marchionne? So it should be a good event. Hopefully, there will be perfect weather that day. I know one of my favorite vendors is the apple crisp from the First Baptist Church. I look forward to that every year, so hopefully, the drought didn't affect the apples too much, and they'll be in beautiful condition in a couple of weeks to be turned into some nice apple crisp. Does anybody else have anything else under the community calendar? Counselor Frida?
Not really directly, but I just wanted to bring up a fundraiser that I attended last Thursday, and there hasn't seemed, there hasn't been a whole lot of conversation about the situation, but I find it pretty disgusting that...
the situation, but I find it pretty disgusting that Lomondster resident, up until recently, I'm not sure he's still here, but he's been living here for the past nine or 10 years, and has a lot of strong ties to the community, was severely beaten at the prison in Shirley, severely beaten, that his condition is extremely serious. My understanding is that it was, he was supervising inmate gym session, and was, his head was smashed with a piece of gym equipment, and it was extremely serious. I went to a fundraiser for him last Thursday that was at Classics, and it was extremely well-attended. The financial responsibility is going to be enormous. I would just encourage everyone for prayer and just keep them in mind, and to watch for any kind of fundraisers. I think there are many more being planned, and if you can attend them or donate in some way, it would be helpful for the community, for the family.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Matthew Tidman is his name.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Counsel Frida. Is there any other items to come under the community calendar? Counsel Cormier?
Just quickly, I just wanted to, I had the privilege of attending the 9/11 cookout at the Johnny Row Memorial Park. This weekend, it was a bit of a smaller crowd. I don't know if the weather did hold off, and it was the opening day for the Patriots, so I'm hoping that was part of the reason, but it was, they put on a fantastic cookout that's free for veterans and their families. It's always a beautiful day, and I just wanted to shout out to the organizers, the people that went all out, organized it, set up the tents, cooked the food, presented the food. Alan Schwartz did the National Anthem, as he normally does, and Mark Monaculla was the DJ. They do, they donate their time, they do a great job, so I just wanted to make sure we got to thank you up to them.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Counsel Brady?
Actually, along with that, I'd like to give a shout out to the Veterans, International Veterans Corps. They did a ceremony yesterday morning, and they commented. It sounded wonderful. It was nice to see the gentleman.
I did see them on Facebook as well, Facebook Live. They always do a good job, and we do thank them as well for showing up on a Sunday morning to keep the memory alive of all those people that we lost that day. Thank you. Oh, Counsel Frida?
Just while we're talking to 9/11, it's hard to believe, Tom Pecorelli, who came from Lomondster and grew up on Debbie Drive, went to Farbrooke School, his wife was pregnant at the time, and it's hard to believe, that child is 21 years old now, and never met her father, so it's kind of a sad, really sad commentary when you look at it that way.
Time has went by fast. Counselor Angelini?
I was wondering if the chair would take a motion to adjourn.
Absolutely. Do we have a second? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr? All those in favor of adjournment, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are now adjourned. Thank you all very much.
at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com, and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.